We are back in open session. Chancellor Burke will provide a welcoming greeting.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Zoom board meeting at the South Orange County Community College District. We thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate this virtual platform. Starting with tonight's meeting, we are implementing Board Docs software to run all future board meetings. We welcome the board members who are participating via Zoom webinar. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video or call has been muted. Trustees Marcia Milchiker, Tim Jamal, Teri Witt-Rydell, Barbara J., Carolyn Inman, TJ Pendergast, James Wright, and Student Trustees Satara Mateen have been designated as panelists. We also welcome any members of our district community and the members of the public who are viewing the meeting live via Zoom webinar. Following the meeting, the district will make the recording available on the SOCCCD website. The audio of this meeting is being closed captioned in real time. As a reminder, board members are asked to use the raise hand feature via Zoom when they wish to speak and are encouraged to mute their audio when not speaking to minimize disruption. The board is open to receiving public comments. The published agenda requested for public comments to be submitted in advance of the meeting by email. Public comments will be read aloud at the appropriate time during the meeting. I would now like to turn the meeting over to Trustee Milchiker, who will call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Chancellor Burke. The July 26, 2021, Meeting of the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. This governing board meeting is conducted pursuant to California Code Section 54953 and Governor Newsom's executive orders N. 2920 and N. 3520. I ask that trustees mute themselves at this time. There are no reportable actions from the closed session, isn't that correct?
That is correct.
Correct, okay. Right now, we're moving to having an invocation led by trustee Barbara J., followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by trustee Tim Jamal. Do you want to stand up? Or do you want to sit down? We'll stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, and please bow our heads. Our Heavenly Father, we come to you in gratitude for our many blessings. We are so thankful for our wonderful administrators, faculty, classified staff, and police officers who have given so much of themselves and worked together to help students and institution get through this pandemic. We are so grateful for everyone working together to get our classes online and available to the community. We are grateful for the incredible unselfishness and hard work shown by all those involved in donating to our support programs and foundations for providing emergency help and funds for our students and employees. Help us as a board to bring the colleges together to get through these challenging times. Please bless this coming fall semester so we can do the best we can for our students. Please bless and watch over our students, staff, and community. Help our nation come together in this time of crisis with freedom, health, and justice for all. Help us especially to be patient, kind, loving, and tolerant. Amen.
Okay, please join with me in reciting our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now, are there any public comments that the public has submitted to be read aloud at the board meeting?
No, we have received no public comments for this evening.
Excellent. So, right now, we're going on to the oral reports. Right now, the first board member will be speaking this time will be trustee Barbara J., followed by TJ Pendergast, Jim Wright, Tim Jamal, Teri Witt-Rydell, Carolyn Inman, and me. But right now, trustee Barbara J. will give her board report if she has one.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
On July 29, I took the campus tour of IVC, given by Mahoney and Mary Opal. It was very good, very informative, and I didn't realize how big IVC was, how many acres they had. It was huge because there was a lot of IVC that I had never seen. I am the trustee representative to the IVC Foundation, and I have a report. The IVC Foundation was recently informed that the institution was included in Mr. Bruce M. Jewett's estate plans as the beneficiary of his IRA and that Mr. Jewett had passed away. This was not Mr. Jewett's first gift. In fact, he has a long and impactful history with the foundation. In the late 1900s, Mr. Jewett approached Dr. Stephen Rockford to let him know that he wanted to establish an endowment for the instrumental music program. At the time, the minimum required to create one was $7,500, and Mr. Jewett gave the full amount. Over the years, many others contributed, and that amount is the largest individual endowment amount at the IVC, representing approximately 30% of IVC's total endowment. With the permission of the department chair and much to the delight of his family, the account will be now renamed to the Bruce M. Jewett Instrumental Music Endowment.
Nice, yeah. Excellent, thank you. Okay, trustee TJ Pendergast, do you have a report?
Just to add on, the tours of IVC and Saddleback were very informative and enjoyable learning experiences, as well as nice to get back out about the campuses. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Be great. Trustee Jim Wright, James Wright?
Yes, I also went to Irvine Valley College campus to tour on Tuesday, June 29, 2021, from the hours of 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. It was a wonderful experience to go and see what was happening at the Irvine Valley College. And it was a great tour that we had. And then the other thing I have, the other thing that I have is I just want to thank those who have prepared. Thanks for, the chancellor, for example, has written something about what's happening. And also, John Herandis and Deliette, they have good, good, good reports. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, trustee Tim Jamal.
First of all, Jim, I'm so, trustee Wright, I'm so impressed that you're wearing a tie at these virtual meetings and have continued to do so, even in the middle of summer. Very impressive, Jim. You're definitely showing up, TJ and myself. Good, good job. Ditto on the IVC tour. Extremely informative, well done. Shout out to everyone, in particular, Metahani from the district office, who showed us around, gave us, now, some of these projects are 20 years down the road, but nevertheless, I think it gave us a real sense of exciting things that are happening, both at Saddleback and at IVC. So, thank you.
Thank you. And then trustee Teri Witt-Rydell.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I've been on vacation this past month, but I did want to report a few items that I missed from our foundation at Saddleback College last time. And I just wanted everyone to know that the Saddleback College Foundation investments surpassed over $10 million as of May, at the end of May of this year, and that's quite a bit. We elected four new board of directors members and included representatives, such as Octane of Orange County and Cox Communication. I think it's wonderful to have large companies from our community with our foundation. We surpassed our annual scholarship fundraising goal and received a quarter of a million dollar gift of endowment to our nursing scholarships, which, as you all know, I'm very heartfelt for. And we also look forward to celebrating the grand opening of the Saddleback Stadium. Everyone put this on your calendar, it's October 2, which will also be the homecoming. So, again, Saturday, October 2 for our stadium. And the 21st Annual Foundation Gala is planned now in person at the Ritz-Carlton on Saturday, November 13. So, November 13 for a gala and October 2 for our stadium opening. I hope you're all having a wonderful summer. Hope you are away from the heat. I wasn't on vacation. It was absolutely an incredible experience, being from 124 sleeping in 105. So, life is good here in Southern California by our ocean. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, absolutely. Trustee Carolyn Inman.
Yes, I want to add about the Irvine Valley College campus tour. It was, I've been on that campus many times, but there were parts, I guess, I had never actually been to. So, that was really fun. My favorite part was that next to the theater, which is, you know, such a beautiful building and, you know, everything, is going to be a big fine arts campus with all, pulling all the fine arts from different places on campus and putting them all together. So, I think that's going to really be good for students. One of the things I read in our board report that I thought was really interesting and I was happy to see was the college pass program for the buses, for OCTA. So, I think that's a great thing for our students. And President Milchiker asked for a report from Lucy Dunn, and they printed the whole, sent us, I should say, the whole report, which was very interesting. You would think she was like a, you know, member of our board. She was so positive about the community colleges. I just really enjoyed reading it. And finally, I'd like to welcome the new leaders, including our new board member, and looking forward to working with everyone for the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, my board report, thank you. I want to thank trustee Tim Jamal for recommending that we take tours of Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College for the board members. It's really important for board members to have an insightful vision of our colleges now and into the future and into the far future. So, sincere thanks to everyone, like Metahani and all the people that helped set up these tours. I'm delighted that our colleges are opening up in the fall for in-person as well as online classes, and I'm pleased that students at both colleges, at Saddleback College, such as athletics, binary art, and emeritus music classes are being given and incentivized to get the vaccine at the student health centers. These students will be given a $25 Amazon gift card, and the students at Irvine Valley College, every month, every week, can enter a drawing for these wonderful prizes if they sign up for a vaccination at the Irvine Valley College Student Health Center. So, we're doing our part, and the students are doing their part to protect our amazing campus communities. And as a research biologist, I'm thrilled that our innovative, incredible, lifesaving vaccines have had such a salutary effect in helping all of us get back to our normal lives. Thank you. And now, the student trustee, Satara Mateen, do you have a report?
Yeah, adding on about the IVC tour, it was my first time being on campus. I unfortunately couldn't make it to the Saddleback one. So, just seeing everyone in person was really nice. And the future improvements for IVC, one that really stood out to me was the LRC and the Student Learning Center. Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Is that your report?
Yeah.
It's a wonderful campus. It has grown from an acre of land to a full-blown fabulous campus in 30 years, in 30 few years.
Come from orange groves.
From the orange groves to a full-blown college campus with wonderful pods for every discipline. It's great. Okay, thank you. Now, the students, Associate Student Government Reports. First, the Saddleback College Student Body President, Stem Lockhart, is he here?
No, he's not in attendance.
Okay, and then we have the IVC Student Body President, D'Angelo Hunter, and ASIVC Executive Vice President, Franz, Franz, I'm going to pronounce his name right. Kivit, Kivit, is that correct? Okay, D'Angelo.
I'm sorry, I just joined as the panelist, so I reset my connection, but...
So, you're the ASIVC president?
Yes, I'm the ASIVC president, starting my term just now. It's great to see you all, by the way. And just to beat on that head horse, yeah, we have a beautiful campus. I visit it all the time. I really love IP and just walking around. But other than that, our executive meetings have started. We've begun discussing our trajectory for the semester. Some of that is our judicial appointment process and also our Senate election process. Those go hand in hand. We've also sent someone to the SSC delegate assembly. So, you know, I'm waiting, and I want to hear more about that as well. The, some events are going to be happening. A lot of them are in the pipeline, so, you know, just kind of like, show you the ones that are more, you know, some are inaugural and some have been going on for a while. We have the Walk of Hope, which is in October, which is for mental health and suicide awareness. We also have the 9/11 Memorial, it's the 20th anniversary, so we're looking to do something for that as well. One of our bigger events that's going to happen pretty much at the start is a movie night, which will be cool. And then, also, we have, the IVC Foundation is meeting here soon for their retreat, and that's one of the, you know, one of the funders, ASIVC gives money to that. It's, you know, we have representation there as well. And, you know, as we start to have all our events and everything kind of happening, we're using every guideline, every single thing, to make it as safe as possible to be able to do them if we can, you know. But we want to keep that online component, since it was so active during the pandemic, first, even before the pandemic. So, really exciting things going on. I'm glad to be taken to helm at this time and really glad for Franz as well. He's been probably my right-hand man for more than anything, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Wonderful things going on at IVC. Okay, and Franz Kivit, do you have something to say to the Executive Vice President of IVC?
I would just like to introduce myself. I kiss myself off the cameras, right? But hi, my name's Franz Kivit. I'm the Executive Vice President, so I'm really excited to get to work with D'Angelo and really serve our students well. So, that's all, thank you.
Thanks, good things going on at IVC. And now, we have Irvine Valley College Academic Senate, talking about Irvine Valley College, Daniel D. Rouay, do you have something to say or report?
Greetings, trustees. In the spirit of summer meetings and the amazing speed in which you have moved through these meetings during the summer, the Summer Academic Senate has no report.
Okay, thank you. We're trying to move quickly through. We're working, doing our best. Thank you. And then, Margot Lovett, the Academic Senate President at Saddleback College.
Thank you all. I will make just a few short comments, so as not to keep us too long. Like the IVC Academic Senate, Saddleback's Academic Senate is gearing up for the start of a new academic year. And I have to say that we are very much looking forward to working productively with our college administration, with the district, and with our Board of Trustees to provide our students with the very best education possible. There's just one issue that I would like to comment on that came up at last month's Board of Trustees meeting. At that meeting, trustee Jay questioned the cost of hiring a professional sports graphics firm to design Saddleback College's new logo. She asked, how much will this cost us? And I wish I had been able to respond at the time, because I would have said that $19,000 out of a total district operating budget of over $400 million is a miniscule amount to pay to do the right thing. I think that many of you know that just last week, the Cleveland Indians changed their name to the Cleveland Guardians. And my interpretation is that they too decided to do the right thing. And like us, they will have to spend money to refurbish their stadium and their field and to create a new logo. So, this is important for us, because the faculty at Saddleback, and actually, I think that I speak for staff and administrators here as well, are committed to serving our students to the very best of our abilities. But I know that that effort will fail unless all students feel welcome on our campuses. So, we must always, always choose to do the right thing, the respectful thing, the ethical thing. And I also believe that all of our trustees share our commitment to making our colleges more inclusive and a place where all students feel that they are truly welcome. So, I very much look forward to working together with you to reach that goal, and that is my report.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Margot, President Lovett.
Thanks, Margot.
Margot works.
And, okay, thanks. And now, the Faculty Association President, Professor Louis Long.
Thank you. I just have two short items in my report. The first thing is that the next time this board meets, the two campuses will be in session for their fall semester, and we will have some on-the-ground, in-person instruction. But I would like to thank the trustees, Chancellor Burke, Vice Chancellor of Human Resources Cindy Viskachill, the college presidents, and the college vice presidents for a science-driven, reasonable, and rational return to campus, which is intended to both return to as much of a normal kind of instruction as we can at the same time to protect the health and welfare of the students and the faculty and the staff. And we are very grateful that this rational response has taken place. The second thing I'd like to say is that our negotiations, we hope, are reaching for the faculty contract, the new faculty contract, are, we hope, reaching their final stages. We've narrowed it down to just the final item, salaries. And we look forward to a significant improvement in pay equity for our hard-working and highly qualified part-time faculty members and hope that the next time the board meets, we will be meeting in order to report successful resolution of the contract. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Louis.
Thank you, Louis. And now, we have the Irvine Valley College Classified Senate, who right now is Desiree Ortiz.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chancellor Burke and Board of Trustees. I'm honored to be here on my first Board of Trustees meeting, representing our classified professionals as the new Classified Senate Presidents. My name is Desiree Ortiz. For those of you that I have not had the pleasure of working with or meeting, and I am the Senior Administrative Assistant and Financial Aid. I just want to take a minute to congratulate and highlight our classified professionals, especially my fellow colleagues in our student support services, who have now transitioned, working 50% back on campus. During this unprecedented time, we've been working diligently, not only to serve our students with care, but to make sure that we are really there for each other. As you know, we pride ourselves on being a caring campus, and we really do recognize the need for resources for students, not only remotely, but definitely on campus. So, as we transition back, we're just really trying to make sure that we're now caring for each other. A lot of our support staff is working on their departments to make sure that all of our students receive extra resources that are needed during this time, especially my fellow colleagues in financial aid are working especially diligently to make sure that they're receiving funding. For example, our HIRF grant now is being auto-awarded, meaning that students will automatically, if they have a need in their file, be receiving these funds. And we really are working to streamline our financial aid process to really focus more on student engagement and making sure we listen to our students' needs. So, we're all gearing up for the fall, and please let us know if there's anything you need from us. Thank you.
Yeah, that's good. I know you do a great job with your caring campus at IVC, so thank you.
Thank you, yes. We're gearing up for another fall exciting session, so we'll invite you all over.
Thank you, thank you. Love that, thank you. Next, Saddleback College Classified Senate, Darren England.
He's not in attendance.
Okay, and next, California School Employee Association, Scott Ferguson-Green.
Not in attendance.
And then, then there's Police Officers Association, Beau Arbuthnot.
Not in attendance.
Okay, so then the next item is item K, and it's the board request for a report. And I actually submitted a request for a report that I, on the agenda, I had it placed on the agenda in time and in the right time, just in time. And I did it because, as trustee Inman said, there was an article in the, an opinion article in the Orange County Register by Lucy Dunn, the CEO and President of the Orange County Business Council, saying that the community colleges are the answer to the economic return to the economic prosperity that Orange County had prior to the, prior to the pandemic. And people across, all the politicians across the whole country are saying community colleges are the, are the answer to, to, to the, to actually helping our communities get out of the academic doldrums that we've been in, because, you know, businesses have closed down, you know, restaurants have closed down, so many different businesses have closed down. So, in light of that, I did include her, her piece in my request for the report. I wanted a board report on the different CTE programs that we offer at Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, and that's including cybersecurity, real estate, business, manufacturing, you know. I listed a whole number, I don't have to list them all right now. So, and I think it's very important for, as we tell people, that it's the community colleges that are going to really help turn the community's economy around, that we're the ones that are going to make the difference for our economy, that our students are going to get the good jobs, that we have a report on what these programs are. Where do we teach cybersecurity? Is it a certificate or is it a degree? How much do the students make? Do they get jobs right away when they get out of the college? When they get out of their, when they get their AA degree or get their certificates? So, and I think it's important for the trustees to know this, so they have it on the tip of their tongue, or when, you know, the local club asks the trustees to speak about what's going on at the colleges, we could say, well, we're offering auto mechanics, we're offering the many, many programs that we have to offer that really give these students high-paying jobs. And also to tell our students, these jobs are available to our students, and they can, I mean, these programs are available to our students and have the students be aware of these programs. I know they're on, they're on the website, but this will give us, you know, kind of a, actually, for us and the students and our constituents, a reason to really learn about all of our CTE programs and our, what they used to call vocational programs, to get these students good jobs in the community and see how well they do. So, I think that's a very long, kind of off the top of my head, report of what I was asking for and why. So, I think we need a motion and a second, and the board has to vote on whether they agree on having this report presented to us at one of the board meetings, perhaps in September, whenever, it's a good time, when there's time on the agenda that we can have an opportunity to really learn about all these wonderful programs. Trustee Jamal?
Yes, a couple of things. One, I'm glad you referenced Lucy Dunn. I've actually known Lucy for over 15 years now. I met her on her first week on her job as the CEO of the Orange County Business Council. I was the CEO of another association that represented the tech industry, which now has become Octane, who trustee Jay mentioned, I think, and, or trustee Whit mentioned in her report. Lucy has announced her retirement, as some of you may know, at the end of the year, and a huge loss for the business council, but I think she has lots of fun things planned in the future. So, I wish her the best. And we've been longtime members as a district of the Orange County Business Council, and I think they're going to do a national search for her successor. But the second point is, I support this request. Trustee Milchiker, I, you know, I've talked a lot about... Um, I've, you know, I've talked a lot about CTE programs. I think maybe we did a similar report, maybe about ten years ago, but I think it's time to update it. Uh, my question is, um, when you talk about, uh, financial achievement of our students, is that something, I mean, I'd love to see that data. Can we even get that data?
I know that's part of the thing that, that, um, they're asking for is how our CTE students do financially. Do they get a job right away? How much they make? Um, I've, I've read reports about it and, and I've seen some data on it, but I, I, um,
What I'm saying is I support it, but can we get it?
Yes, I believe we can.
Okay.
And, and the, and the, the opinion piece was called, um, "Orange County Community Colleges Offer Competitive Advantage for Economic Recovery." And so many of these, um, programs that we offer, that we laud at our, at our district, that we see are so important for our students, it's important for us to know about them and, and to be able to talk about them in the community and, and for our students to know about them. So, so that would be really good. Um, there, there was a, a monograph put out by the, uh, ACCT called ROI, Return on Investment, that talked about which programs make the most money for vocational, what used to be called vocational, which are CTE programs that, that students can complete a program, how they could, you know, how much money they would make if they complete certain CTE programs. And it's helpful for students to know that right off the bat before they even start these programs. So that they, if it's important to them, maybe it's not important to them, maybe satisfaction is more important to them. But if they want to know about it, it's important to know about it.
So I, just a couple of caveats. I, I mean, again, I support it. Uh, um, I'd like to make, ensure we include both commercial and residential real estate, not just residential. Um, and then, um, the other thing is what's the timeline for this?
I didn't put a timeline in it. I just wanted it to be, um, done. And I, I understand the office board meeting is when we're going to finalize our final budget. And it's the first meeting that we come back to at the end. So I was told that's a pretty heavy meeting. So I was thinking a, a meeting that's not quite as, um, busy, maybe in September. It, it's, it's when, when, when the colleges can, can complete it, 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 you know, that, that doesn't have to be anything that would, um, you know, they, they could just talk about their, their CTE programs. I'm sure they know it backwards and forwards. I'm sure they know about it.
So we would aim for September and, and if for some reason we can't complete it by September, we'll, we would do it in October. But September would be the goal.
So how are you gonna, I mean, I'm reading, I mean, this is great, but are we going to cover all the CTE programs? Because it says in here, some of the programs. So I assume we're going to cover all of them in this report.
Well, we had talked about, uh, we've had a preliminary discussion of this, uh, between the presidents and myself. And we were thinking that this was a good idea to do actually on an annual basis. And that what we would do is fifty percent of the programs this year and then the other fifty percent of the programs next year. And then continue to do that on an ongoing basis.
I see. Is that okay with you, Marcia?
Yeah, that's okay with me. Uh, uh, just so that, you know, I'm just using cybersecurity as an example. I, I know that that's in the, with all this ransomware, uh, stuff and all this. You, it's a really important for students to get jobs and they, they need people and they're really high paying jobs. And I was told these programs are offered at, at both of the colleges, but I, I, I just don't know for sure. And I just wanted to, wanted that information. And, and as you're saying, commercial, Saddleback College is like the center for real estate, uh, in, in the whole area. So, so, um, it's well known for that. And they have a lot of the programs at Saddleback College. A lot of trustees don't know that perhaps, or a lot of the students don't know that. And, you know, uh, they're, they're doing a lot of electronic, uh, programs at both Saddleback and Irvine Valley College. Of course, they have the health programs mostly at Saddleback College and more electronic programs at Irvine Valley. So, you know, with their, with their, uh, idea building. And of course, as you're saying, with, with the, um, the culinary arts program, which is so important for now in the community coming out of the pandemic and with the new, um, autonomous cars and the, uh, uh, you know, the electric cars, the auto mechanic program are really high paying jobs for students. Let the students learn about these programs. They're exciting programs. So that's okay with me.
Marcia, I second, I second this.
Thank you. Did you make a? Make a motion? Okay. So, um, are there any other comments or do you want to, uh, so they can, okay, um, trustee, okay, Madam Secretary, can you please call the role?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Matty?
Aye.
Thank you. It passes. And now we, we, oh, the final resolution, this, this is the new board, this is the new board docs. You can, everyone could see how everyone voted on, on the screen. So it's, um, it's, it's kind of user friendly. I've, I found it, I found it user friendly so far. So, um, now we're going on to the, uh, public hearing and this is, um, and this is about in five point one, the redistricting process, process for the South Orange County Community College District. And right now, um, item number five point one is a public hearing and presentation for the redistricting update as it relates to voting areas and elections in the South Orange County Community College District. This is one of five required meetings for our redistricting process in our district. For the presentation, we will hear from Kim Shigatani of Redistrict Partners and her team. Ms. Shigatani, the floor is yours.
Um, so thank you so much for having us this evening. Um, Paul is running, I think, a little bit late. I think he got held up at another hearing. And so I will start the presentation and then hand it over to him as soon as he joins.
Here, he's here.
Oh, I'm here. Well, thanks for having us. Um, uh, as you likely know, Kimmy Shigatani has spent quite a long time working with the community colleges. Um, and so she's really happy to be helping you out. Um, as you might know as well, um, I have a history with the community colleges, uh, and have spent a lot of time in your district when I was a student at Orange Coast and involved in the student government. And I was president of the State Student Association and our regional director was at, uh, Saddleback. So, um, spent a lot of time, uh, at your campus, uh, and happy to be here, uh, with you today. So, um, if we go to the next slide, uh, just to go over a little bit, Redistricting Partners is a firm that has done dozens of redistrictings and conversions from at large district elections to district election systems throughout the state over the past two redistricting cycles. Um, and most recently, uh, we did conduct the conversion for the city of Santa Ana, which had an election system in which they had districts. Um, but people were still being elected by the city as a whole. So it was a, uh, mixed system that was under the California Voting Rights Act considered to be an at large election system. Next slide. Uh, the work that we're doing is under the banner of the Foundation for California Community Colleges, which we're proud to work with uh, throughout the system. Uh, we're also doing this with the California School Boards Association for K-12. Um, and working with a number of cities and counties across the state in doing this, this work. Next slide. I'm the owner of the company, uh, and have done dozens of redistrictings. And Sophia Garcia, who's somebody else that you'll see, uh, coming to these meetings, uh, often, uh, is our GIS Outreach Director and she, uh, will be, uh, kind of sitting second chair essentially on this redistricting process. Next slide. So the items that we're going to go through will include the California Voting Rights Act, the differences between three terms that can kind of be used interchangeably sometimes, districting, redistricting and gerrymandering. Um, I'll go over some of the traditional redistricting principles. Um, and go over some of the population composition of, uh, the Community College District and mapping of the trustee areas. Next slide. So first off, California Voting Rights Act is different than the Federal Voting Rights Act in that it is very narrowly tailored to one issue. And that one issue is at large election systems. So where the Federal Voting Rights Act might come in and have required changes in ballot design or polling locations or other issues, the one simple fact, simple item that the California Voting Rights Act hones in on is the idea of at large election systems. And under the California Voting Rights Act, um, the definition of an at large system is any election system in which the members are not elected in districts and only by voters in those districts. There are actually sections of election code that give other definitions for at large, but that's the definition that's used in the California Voting Rights Act. The California Voting Rights Act relies on this, uh, statement that if there is racially polarized voting, then so on and so on and so on for the rest of the act. And racially polarized voting under the California Voting Rights Act is more loosely defined than in federal law. Um, and it, it speaks to voting patterns where the voting patterns are aligned to the protected classes. Largely in California, we're talking about Latinos, Asians and African Americans, but it could be also other national origin, ethnic or, uh, religious language minority groups. Next slide. So in federal law, um, there is prohibitions on election systems that dilute the voting strength of protected classes, somewhat similar to what we have in California uh, and the California Voting Rights Act. But in federal law, it requires that a agency that is potentially in violation has the ability to create majority minority districts. Uh, the California Voting Rights Act doesn't require majority minority districts. It just requires that that minority population could have the quote unquote ability to influence the outcome of an election, which is a, a much lower bar, uh, when we're looking at, uh, potential violations of the California Voting Rights Act versus violations of the Federal Voting Rights Act. Another difference that really has, uh, spurred, uh, California Voting Rights Act lawsuits, where you don't see them, uh, utilizing federal law, is, uh, the fact that attorneys are guaranteed reimbursement, uh, for any successful challenge. Um, next slide. Or that's right, uh, right there is perfect. So the, the, uh, one thing that has been built into the law in the last decade is that the fees that an attorney can get under a California Voting Rights Act challenge can be capped um, at an adjusted thirty thousand dollars, uh, so adjusted for inflation. Um, if an agency agrees to, uh, conversion process and follows through with that in a set amount of time. Um, agencies that don't, uh, choose to go through that kind of a, a, a settlement or an agreement with an, uh, with a plaintiff or a potential plaintiff, um, might find themselves with huge fees. The city of Santa Monica right now is looking at more than twelve million. The city of Santa Clara um, had, I think, five to eight million. Um, and we've seen huge fees, uh, associated with, uh, violations of the California Voting Rights Act. Next slide. So one thing to clarify, um, the boundaries under the California Voting Rights Act are utilized in order to determine eligibility run for office and who votes in that election. Um, next slide. What they, oh, sorry, that what they don't determine, uh, is how you govern. So, um, that is one thing to note. You already do have areas and those areas likely don't have a lot of play into how you have your discussions and how you view your responsibilities as board members. But under a CVRA compliance system, it would determine not just where you live, what districts you live in, but also who the voters are in that district. Now, after you do have districts, um, or even if you have areas for the, uh, for where somebody has to live, even if you're elected at large, you still need to undergo the process of redistricting, which is the balancing of districts, uh, every ten years based on the changes in the U.S. Census. Uh, the redistricting process is one of the most contentious legally. Um, and we see every ten years, small changes in how the process is done. Next slide. So gerrymandering is another thing. And oftentimes when, uh, you know, if I get in an Uber and somebody says, what do you do? And I say, I do redistricting, they immediately go to gerrymandering as if they're synonymous. Um, gerrymandering comes from, as many of you know, an old political cartoon. Um, and Governor Gary, who was a vice president, was a signer of the Declaration of Independence and didn't even support, uh, this redistricting plan, but was the one that ultimately had to sign it as the governor. Um, but it was a set of state senate district boundaries. And a political cartoonist said it looked like a salamander or a dragon or whatever it was. And it became known as the gerrimander. It was Governor Gary, so you can call it a gerrimander. It's kind of the GIF versus JIF debate is gerrimander versus gerrimander. Um, but, uh, this is an old timey thing, you know, with a district with this head and wings and talons. And we don't think of it as being something that we would see nowadays. But if you go to the next slide, that is literally a state senate district that existed in two thousand and one with a head and wings and talons. It looks to me a lot like the original gerrimander. Um, but it was a district that was drawn largely to protect other political interests. And if you know the area up in LA, think of San Marino and South Pasadena. And if that should go in a district with Maywood and, uh, heavily Latino areas going down into Los Angeles, very just different communities and not something that would likely be, uh, considered uh, in a fair redistricting process to be put together in the same districts. Next slide. If your students are in a political science class right now, uh, or they are in the fall and they learn about redistricting, they might see a little, uh, um, game theory experiment like this where you're given these nine triangles or nine, sometimes it's Democrat, Republican, but for our purposes, uh, we can take out the partisanship and just look at these yellow and green. And if we just give you each five seconds to draw three districts, it's probably going to look something like the next slide. Just three horizontal or vertical bars. And if you draw horizontal or vertical districts like this, in either case, you're going to have two where the yellow, uh, would likely elect a candidate of choice and one where the green would be able to elect a candidate of choice. Now, if you were to get tricky and do the next slide, you now can take that minority and give them a plurality of the districts. And that is essentially what can happen through gerrymandering is that you're, uh, you enable, uh, the people, if the green people, green people in this instance had the pen and they wanted to disenfranchise the yellow community that is the majority, they could do it with some artistic drawing of lines. Next slide. So the real question is that for policymakers is how do we draw districts in a way that makes it harder to gerrimander? That, that removes a lot of the pathways through which gerrymandering occurs. So some of it is through these traditional principles that the state law has built upon in order to create fair redistricting. So the first is that districts are equal size. Um, that they're equal size based on the people, not citizens or voters. You can go to the next slide. Go ahead and hit it again. Now, population is based on people, not, like I said, registered voters or citizens or other kind of numbers. Um, and that is something that was adjudicated as recently as a few years ago at the U.S. Supreme Court. When in Texas, they attempted to draw legislative districts and utilize an estimated data set of, uh, people who were eligible to vote. Um, it's a data set that we'll talk about because it's called the, uh, citizen voting age population. It is a useful data set in redistricting, but it is not something the Supreme Court felt was appropriate for drawing equal districts. There's an interesting conflict for any of you who are real into the constitutional aspects of this. Um, wherein there are two seemingly, uh, at odds, uh, constitutional guarantees. The first is equal protection. And so equal protection says that we all have equal representative power in our government. That because of where you live, no person gets, you know, three council districts, council members, because they're in like the cool part of town. Whereas in the other part of town, they get fewer representatives. It is meant to be that everybody has equal representative power. Um, we did a redistricting for a community college, in fact, um, in another part of the state where they had not rebalanced their districts since the nineteen fifties. And they had over time, the one they, in nineteen fifties, the districts were balanced, but over time, one district had twelve thousand people and the other district had a hundred thousand people. And so in that representative calculation, you had a situation where people in the twelve thousand person district, they literally had eight times the political representation as people in the other part of the district. the other part of the district. So, depending on where you lived in that community college district, you would either have much, much, much more political power or much, much, much less. So, that was the idea with equal representation, that if you have a pothole or want to advocate for different classes or whatever it is going to be, that everybody has equal opportunity to reach their elected official and that their voting, their representative power is not diluted. The voting is the second half, the idea of one person, one vote. That's another constitutional guarantee. And where, in that example with the 12,000, 100,000, the actual voters in those districts were a little bit different. Then it was 10,000 and 70,000. So, it went from an eight-to-one ratio to a seven-to-one ratio, because not every area has an equal number of eligible voters that are citizens, that are over 18. And so, as a result of that, you had this seven-to-one ratio where some people's vote was seven times more powerful than the other people's vote. And then, when you're balancing, you're not going to be able to balance those two things exactly perfectly. It's very uncommon to have districts where they're perfectly balanced based on population and also perfectly balanced based on eligible voters. Sometimes there's a little bit difference. But the courts have leaned into districts being balanced based on the population. The second piece of this is that districts need to be balanced, but they don't need to be perfect. We can go to the next slide. Oh, sorry, I'll just talk about it on, sometimes I have an intervening slide there. But in that equal-size metric, congressional districts have to be to one person. So, they have to be all perfectly equally sized. Every congressional district in the state of California right now is 702,904 people based on the 2010 census, give or take one person. So, that is a very narrow deviation. In local government, you can have a 10% deviation. And that deviation is really important. We would want to look at all the redistricting possibilities before trying to accept or decide on a plan that had a narrower deviation. A narrower deviation can be really great in terms of giving everybody equal representation, but if it were to require some real weird lines, or the splitting of a community, or doing other things that are not beneficial in the redistricting process, you have the full latitude of that 10% deviation. The second here is that districts be contiguous. That means whole parts, that they don't hop or jump around. Next slide. Two things to think about in the idea of contiguity. One is that something needs to be contiguous, meaning that it needs to be touching. The second is that it needs to be contiguous based on, like, functionally how it's contiguous. If you and I were standing on either side of the John Wayne Airport, somebody from a satellite photo might say, "Oh, look, they're contiguous because they're right across from each other." But in a reality, from one side of the airport to the other, to get to each other, we'd have to go all the way up and get on the freeway and come back around and get off another exit and come back. And so, functionally non-contiguous, even though literally like, maybe we could throw a frisbee to each other, but we aren't really contiguous. So, we'll talk about that potentially, that something being contiguous is not just that they're whole parts, but also how they potentially could interact with each other or not. And then, there are things that are not contiguous, like if you don't have the situation in your district, but if, you know, LA County to Catalina Island, they're not connected, but they are contiguous based on a ferry or something like that. Next slide. Maintaining communities of interest is a critical piece of the process and something that we at Redistricting Partners really emphasize in trying to get public engagement to help identify additional communities of interest. Next slide. So, the communities of interest that are covered by the Federal Voting Rights Act, Latinos, Asians, and African Americans, they are a key primary community of interest in the line-drawing process, specifically, especially in a California Voting Rights Act process, because generally, the fact that a community came forward with a potential claim of voting dilution becomes a primary concern in the creation of lines that might remedy that. However, unless there is a Section 2 requirement for majority-minority districts, race can be considered, but it cannot be a predominant criteria. So, it is something that can be utilized as one of the communities of interest, but we won't go around and call a district "the Asian district" or "the Latino district," because we want to make sure that people understand that when lines are being drawn, that we're utilizing communities of interest, not drawing districts predominantly based on race. Next slide. Other types of communities of interest can be, you know, agricultural versus urban areas, or, you know, city populations, or areas where you have different educational needs. Really, it's, almost anything can be a community of interest. What's really important is that people come forward and can be identified, and they can characterize what their community of interest is, they can discuss and show where it is physically, because in a redistricting process, spatial elements of that community are important, and then its relationship back to the district could be important. So, you might have, as an example, people who are renters, and they could say that they're a community of interest in the community college redistricting process. And the question, why is that a community of interest, might come down to renters are more likely to be needing access to ongoing education, or AA degrees, or other programs and services that the community college provides. At the same time, you might have somebody who is living in an area that's more rural part of the district, and the question is, well, why are they a community of interest? Or, say, a further-away community? And maybe their community of interest is that they're more likely to need transportation services, they're more likely to take advantage of distance learning. There could be other elements to help define them as a community of interest. Next slide. Following existing boundaries can be itself kind of a shortcut to a community of interest. So, an overlying city boundary, a underlying K-12 or high school district boundary could be another kind of community of interest. Next slide. Keeping districts compact is another kind of criteria, traditional criteria. And I'm going to show some slides that, on the next slide, that give a little bit more information to this. So, next slide. So, nationally, if we were having this conversation in the other 49 states, we would probably talk about compactness based on a bunch of different mathematical formulas, or things like measuring the number of bends and kinks in a district. Or, in one state, literally, the Constitution outlaws the creation of funny shapes. So, you know, if somebody makes Mickey Mouse-looking districts, they're somehow not legal. But the funny shape and those other ones are somewhat subjective and, you know, hard to really define. So, in California, on the next slide, we have a definition that is kind of a mouthful and sometimes takes a minute to kind of read through, and we're going to give some examples to kind of show what it is so that it makes a little more sense. But districts are compact if they are not bypassing nearby populated areas in favor of more distant populated areas. That is a weird definition, but I'm going to show some examples of what it means. So, on the next slide, we have an actual city council district. This city council, I won't name it, although if you have good eyesight, you might see it. They're actually now going to be a client of ours, as we're going to redraw their lines. But this red district is not a legal district under the current law. And that's because in the lower right-hand corner, if you hit the next slide, there's this Area A. That community A has two other easily identifiable nearby populations on the next slide in B and C. Oh, we went all the way to D. So, B and C are the nearby populations, but see that far-away population D? To get there, literally, you have to go underneath this underpass of the freeway, Eureka Road, which has been under construction for like a year, and you really can't even cross there. And then, go through another neighborhood, go through a country club, and then get to that other neighborhood in D. If you go to the next slide, you can see that the commission created a connection, next slide, of A to D, despite the fact there was other nearby population that they bypassed. So, that would be a violation of the compactness measure in California state law. Even the demographer that created this now says that that would not be a legal line. Next slide. This is another redistricting, and if we go to the next slide, you can see that we have an Area A to Area B in this one, that is going through some crazy contorted twists and bends to get from one to the other, and very clearly bypassing multiple nearby populations to get a far-away population. On the next slide, you can just hone in and look at that area there. That area there, not only is this violating compactness, but it is dividing up one community of interest. It is a community of interest, interestingly, of city council members, four of whom live in that circle. And the districts were drawn clearly to make sure they could all have their own seat, but in doing so, created what a judge called "a parody of a gerrymander" in this redistricting. So, we will avoid doing things like this. Next slide. This is another one that is a city redistricting that I want to point out, some things that were not compact, but then also reasons why you might have lines that don't necessarily look as clean as you might expect. The districts 1, 2, 3, and 4 here, I think, look all pretty clean in terms of not bypassing nearby population to get to far-away population. But if you go to the next slide, you can look at this District 5 and maybe think to yourself, "Well, you know, is it really compact?" If we go to the next slide, you have A and B, which theoretically maybe are more connected than to go all the way out to C. In between A and C, there are, you know, there's some gas stations and some mini-markets and some little strip malls, before you get to the population in C, which honestly, through its demographics, might be more like Area 3. But the challenge in this redistricting, if you go to the next slide, is that, and let's go to the next slide, is that there were actually only two areas where these populations are connected. So, when I talked about two areas being, we need to have things be contiguous, the areas of 5 and 4 are only contiguous through those two circles. Those are the underpasses of the freeway, the overpass on one side and the underpass on the other. And so, this is an example of a district, that District 5, that might not have the cleanest shape, it might be shaped weird, and it might not seem like it's as compact, but it is necessary because of the need to draw districts that are also contiguous. Next slide. So, when we get into our process, we're going to utilize all of those traditional redistricting criteria, and then add on things that are in the Safe Harbor provisions of the California Voting Rights Act. One of the things that the California Voting Rights Act requires is a set of five hearings, hearings just like this one, two of which will be done prior to actually drawing districts in order to allow the public to see the process you're undergoing and allow them to call-in during public comment and give any additional input. There will also be two hearings post-data, once mapping can be done, so that the maps can be presented to the public with the public giving input. Any maps that are done need to be posted on the community college district redistricting website for seven days prior to you discussing them. And that allows the public to see what maps are going to be discussed prior to a meeting. And this allows, was probably a common practice in the past, of somebody just showing up to a hearing and saying, "Hey, I want to discuss this map," and without the public being able to have time to understand what is being discussed and digest it. If we go to the next slide, the additional things, the last final hearing, by the way, on the redistricting process, is just a one-hearing up-or-down vote on the final plan that's been public for seven days. In addition to those provisions, there's also additional best practices in the law now under the Fair Maps Act. These are laws that are specifically required to be followed by cities and counties, but they do become a best practice for other local governments. And in redistricting, best practice, redistricting is very norms-based and very best-practices-based. So, if we were redistricting for a water district and you looked in the code, there's almost no language requiring anything for a water district redistricting. However, they still have to do it, they still could be sued if they don't do it, and they still need to follow best practices and norms, even though the state law is pretty absent on specific requirements. So, in that vein, we recommend that agencies that are not cities and counties utilize the Fair Maps Act as much as practical. And in the elements that we would look to would be the process and the transparency of the redistricting, not utilizing the incumbent or candidate residences as a community of interest, and not drawing districts to advantage a political party. Next slide. So, the total population of the current areas, based on the current district, first off, is 905,996. That allows for, under that equal-population calculation, an ideal district size of right around 130,000. And your areas, your current areas, the largest is at 145,000, the smallest is at 107,000. So, there's a difference between those two of, you know, just under 40,000. A total deviation of the sum of those two absolute values of those two numbers would be a total deviation of just under 30%. Next slide. When we look at the district, you can see, these are the boundaries, as we were able to obtain those from the county. And you can see the total population of each district and those deviations. The district that is most underpopulated is District 5, the district that's most overpopulated is District 4. In addition, we're able to look at the citizen-voting age population in each of these districts. And as you can see, there is, the highest Latino population is in District 2, at just about a quarter of the population being Latino. The highest Asian population is in District 1 and 6, with, in each of those cases, nearly 30% of the population being Asian. Now, I want to make a note that when I say that a district is X percent Latino or X percent Asian, I'm talking about it in a Voting Rights Act perspective, which is utilizing the citizen-voting age population. That's a data set that's put out by the Federal Department of Justice, or required by the Department of Justice to be put out by the census. And it looks at, essentially, a proxy for eligible voters. It looks at people who are over 18 and citizens. And the data for that comes from the American Community Survey, and that data was released in February for this redistricting cycle, so those data are not going to change. If we go to the next slide, the current estimated population, using that data set, the American Community Survey data, puts your ideal district size up at 141,000. It puts your actual largest district size using that estimate. So, this is maybe a looking forward to what might come out from the census, an estimate of over, around 170,000 for your biggest district, and about 117,000 for your smallest. So, in that way, your total deviation has grown to just around 36%. Next slide. And here's the same map that we saw before, but now, the population data is not from the 2010 census, but it's from the American Community Survey data, so just a different data set. We'll update this for you as soon as the census data is released, but it does show a pretty large deviation. If we go to the next slide, the choices that are going to be before you are to convert to a true districted election system that is compliant with the California Voting Rights Act. But even if you weren't to do that conversion, you would still be required to adjust your areas, the areas in which everybody can run from, to be rebalanced for purposes of, you know, creating that equality again. And so, we would recommend that you go under a redistricting process, no matter what it is you choose to do, and that you utilize a process that is, again, open and transparent and in accordance with the current state law. Next slide, and that's it. We can go and close, and I think that we already have a question.
Yeah, we have, I have a question too, but I'll ask, I'll teach you mine.
Wait, before you take questions, shall we open the public hearings?
Okay. No, I didn't do that, it's not on my script.
Number three.
Oh, yeah, it is, I'm sorry, excuse me. Sorry, thank you for your presentation. At this time, I'd like to officially open the public hearing for Board Item 5.2. The public hearing on the matter at hand is now open. So, are there any questions or comments from the public? So are there any questions or comments from the public?
Or the board members?
Okay.
Only the board members. No, the public.
No, the public?
Yeah, but there's.
I think if it's a public hearing, it has to be for the public because we have to have five public hearings.
But we have to have a public. The public has to be able to make comments.
Right, but there's nobody raising their hand.
Okay, there's nobody raising their hand from the public right now, so take the board members.
Yeah, as long as there's no public, because this has to be a public hearing. So as long as there are no public people raising their hand or wanting to comment, a board member does, which is trustee Jamal. Go ahead, sorry.
Great. Thanks, Paul, for your presentation. Just one note. I don't know if you were aware, we already did vote to go to district elections. So we've done that already.
Great.
So I just want to make that clear at the beginning. So that part's already done. And we didn't have to pay to do it. We did it. And so that's one. And then two, is this now going to be considered one of our pre-mapping hearings now that we're doing this tonight?
Yeah, generally, this would fall under the first pre-mapping hearing, so you're 20% of the way there.
I think we discussed it at a previous meeting.
We did. We did.
The first hearing. You could look into that, okay? Because that might be.
No, I think this is the first hearing. I think we discussed it, but I don't think it was.
Margaret, we got a, Marcia, we got a, we got a presentation in closed session from him. So that doesn't count as public.
No, it was in public session. It was at your board retreat. That was in public.
Yeah, yeah. I discussed it with the chancellor before.
All right.
We were talking about whether that could be considered the first hearing, because it was.
I think that's definitely something, if your council says that that counts as the first hearing, then we're totally happy with that. That's not.
No, we're not. That will not. Reclaiming my time. So this is the first hearing. And then, so we are, we've already voted to do district-based elections. And did you, I know you mentioned, when do we expect the census data to come out?
So the census data is going to come out in a couple waves. You'll hear the first announcement, census data came out around August 16th. That'll be in what's being called the legacy format. It's a, it's a release the census is doing to kind of stave off some lawsuits from different states. Once that data comes out, we can legally start utilizing that data for your process. The state will be doing some adjustment to that data where they're reallocating prison populations and coming out with an official data set that is required to be used by the state, cities, and counties. And so when that data set comes out, we can go ahead and start using that one as well. But legally, you're able to utilize either one of those two. The first data set will be out August 16th. The final data set for the state will be out, we project September 23rd. And then you'll have your own requirements as to whether, you know, to when your actual process needs to be completed.
Thank you.
Have we already, I don't even know this. I mean, are we, have we retained you to do the actual maps? I see Ann Marie nodding her head.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so then.
About a month ago.
Right. So then, Paul, when would be, because we don't have primaries in our district. The first elections, that would be, under the new, would be November 2022. So when's the, I think you told us this before. I think, is it June? Something sometime in June, we have to, before a June date, we have to pass the final map?
Yeah, so sometimes it depends on the county itself. So we could look into it again as to what the county registrar is recommending.
We've checked with them already, and that it's, that it has to be done by the end of February.
Oh, I was off. I thought it was later. Okay. So we've got to, we've got to get giddy up on this.
Yeah, so, yeah, I see, I saw Kimmy nodding on that, so that sounds right.
Okay, so.
You'll have to take the final up or down vote at the February board meeting.
Okay, so it's July, August, September, October, November, December. We're pretty much going to have an update on this nearly every board meeting until the final vote, given the hearings and, I mean, right?
Yes, we will do a map meeting in January, and then we will do one either in October or November. We're going to try to avoid the December meeting.
But wouldn't we want to, do we really want to cut it that close? Is there any way that the registrar, Neil Kelly, is going to say, well, no, you didn't get it right? Or do we want to leave a little buffer? Do we want to have the final vote in January?
That last meeting has to be the final up or down vote, so.
I see.
I think you're fine.
Well, okay. I guess we, there could be challenges to our map, but that's beyond our control. All right. Hey, I was going to ask, Paul, is there any data on the Voting Rights Act? And is it fulfilling its mission?
On the California Voting Rights Act?
Yeah, that targeted at-large districts. Because the reason it did is because those were the districts that they saw opportunities. And, you know, Shankman, you know, pounced on it and did well financially. But I'm, I guess I want to know, did it, has it worked out for our citizens who need the best representation?
Yeah, so I don't think that there's been one, you know, final report on the CVRA. The, there's quite a bit of lag time after CVRA conversions are done for a couple elections to go in place so that we're actually seeing what happens after we have full implementation. Anecdotally, there have been, there's been a lot more turnover in local government. There have been agencies that have elected for the first time younger, more Latino, in certain areas, more minority elected officials. Clearly, it has also helped in the geographic diversity of elected officials. There are a number of places, you know, whether it's Woodland or West Covina or, you know, Whittier, where you have people getting elected from geographical areas that they weren't seeing a lot of candidates come from in the past. And then also, in a number of areas where we've done redistricting, even our very, very first redistricting we did was College of the Desert, and we drew districts that now have elected minority candidates as a result of the new line. So I'd say it has created significant turnover and definitely impacted who is getting elected.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. And I just wondered, I know the Federal Voting Rights Act was passed in '65, and then the California Voting Rights Act was passed in 2001. So we're following the California Voting Rights Act, but do we have to follow some of the tenets in the Federal Voting Rights Act as well?
Yeah, so the federal, the last time that a Federal Voting Rights Act case was made to convert an agency from out-large to districts was in Santa Maria. The city of Santa Maria was sued under the Federal Voting Rights Act, and I think that was probably like a 10, 15-year-long lawsuit. The Federal Voting Rights Act is rather unwieldy. It's hard for attorneys to actually get anywhere with. It takes a long time. And so Federal Voting Rights Act cases, you know, just have been harder for agencies to take on. The California Voting Rights Act has lowered the bar so much on not only what can be a violation, but also in what it takes for attorneys to get their fees paid, that everybody's bringing cases under the California Voting Rights Act. Now, the fact that you don't have the potential likely to create majority-minority districts could mean that you aren't subject to a Federal Voting Rights Act claim for this conversion process. However, there could be things that happen in a redistricting process that could face scrutiny under the Federal Voting Rights Act if, as an example, the agency was doing something to discourage minority engagement in the redistricting process or doing something else that was viewed as a violation of Federal Voting Rights Act. But in every case that we've worked on, in every conversion process that we've seen in the state since 2001, the Federal Voting Rights Act has not been invoked.
Okay.
In a lawsuit against them, you know?
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. Are there any other questions?
Trustee Inman has her hand up.
Inman, sorry. Oh, you're muted.
Should have been ready for that. Okay, I had a question. You mentioned something about prison populations, and unless it's changed, felons don't get to vote. So are they counted in these numbers?
Yeah, so the census is going to come out August 16th. The state is going to take a month-long process of taking the population in the census, taking the population of the prisons, and taking them out of where they are in the census data in the prisons, and then reallocating them to where they were living when they were arrested. There's a reason to do this, and it has to do with kind of fairness in redistricting. Think about it this way. If you were in a district with 400,000 people and 100,000 of them were prisoners, you're effectively in a district now with 300,000 people, and everybody in your district has 25% more voting power than in the neighboring district where there are 40,000, 400,000 real people who need representation and then vote and so on. So in order to create districts that are more equally sized, they're really going to impact like some districts in the Central Valley. Imagine we were drawing supervisor districts in Kings County where almost the entirety of one supervisor district could be created from prisons. That's what, the reason why it's being done.
But that's not exactly my question. My question is, is it still the law that ex-prisoners with felonies do not vote? And if it is, why are they counted in the numbers at all? Because they're not voters.
Yeah, so there is an argument to just not count them at all. What the census is, what the state chose to do was just to remove them from the population and then reallocate them where they were living prior to being arrested. There are a lot of people we count in the redistricting that aren't voters. Non-citizens are counted, counted, kids are voted, people who are, you know, otherwise unable to vote, like felons or people who, you know, are incapacitated. Those people all will count in the redistricting as well. So they're counted in that representative side, you can say, because even if somebody is four years old, they still have an equal right to representation, even though they can't vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Right now, if there are any other members of the public that wish to address the board in this item, please raise your hand or contact the district staff. And right now, I'm going to check with district staff to see if there have been any public comments before I conclude the public hearing.
We have no, we have no one from the public wishing to speak right now.
Okay, thank you. Seeing that no further public comment, we will officially close the public hearing. Is there, are there any other further discussion on the matter from the Board of Trustees? No? Okay, well, thank you so much, Paul, and.
Very good.
We'll be seeing you.
Absolutely. Look forward to it. Thank you very much.
And so Item 5.2 is concluded, and there's no required vote on this particular item because it's just a public hearing. Right now, we're going to, the session of the, of the district, since we changed to Board Dacts, right now it's called, it's called the Board of Trustees Chancellor Section, which is now Chancellor, which is now Section 7. And the minutes, and I guess we have to vote on the minutes now, right?
Yes, you need a motion and a second on the minutes.
You need a, it's a little different than it used to be.
So moved.
Okay. The motion was made by trustee Jamal, seconded by trustee Jay. Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Meltzerker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, Item 7.2, this, once more, used to be in the consent calendar, and now it's in the public section. Do we have a motion and a second for this item, which is, just one conference was listed, that's a virtual conference?
Trustee.
Is there any requests for a conference? Is there anything to vote on?
There's nothing to vote on, but it's listed as an item that we have to vote on. That's why I was.
There is an item in there. It's, isn't it the annual conference?
It's the annual CCLC conference, and it's in November, remember, right? It is a virtual conference. It's three days, and it's estimated about $800.
Yes, November 16 through 19.
Yeah, which is listed, it's about $800, which is a lot for a virtual, was I right about that? Anyway, go ahead. So we need a motion and a second to be able to have trustees attend this conference.
Thank you for the motion.
A second.
Okay, so trustee Wright made the motion, and trustee Rydel seconded. Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Meltzerker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
And the next, 7.3 is Board Policy Revision. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee Jay made the motion, and trustee Inman seconded it. Are there any presentations on this, or is there any questions? This is the second reading, so we're voting on approving the item. So since there's no comments, madam secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Meltzerker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, and there's, there's no presentations. And we had, we had a presentation at the beginning, but that was under public hearing. And right now, the consent calendar. So are there any items that any trustee wishes to remove from the consent calendar? First, we have to do that, of course. No, seeing none, is there a motion and a second for the approval of the?
I move. Second.
A trustee Inman makes the motion, trustee Wright seconds. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll for the items in the consent calendar, which are items?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Meltzerker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
The next, we're in Business Service General Action Item. So Item 10.1 is the IVC Cooperative Agreement with the Orange County Transportation Authority, OCTA, to give our students slave pass passes.
So moved. Glad they're getting the passes.
Yes, so who's seconded?
I did.
Okay, so trustee Jamal made the motion, trustee Wright seconded. Are there any comments? It's good to have you see you're getting bus passes now. So, madam secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Meltzerker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Passes. Now, Item 10.2 is the Saddleback College Parking Lot Agreement with Black House Special Projects LLC. So we're getting a nice benefit of $241,000, $242,000. So is there a motion and a second?
I do. So moved.
Okay, trustee Jay moves, and trustee Wright seconded. Are there any comments? So, just, madam secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Meltzerker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
There he is.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, then Item 10.3, District Services and IVC Notice of Completion Various Projects. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Then trustee Wright seconded it. So was there any comments? So madam secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Meltzerker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
I have to say that in the closed captions, every time you say trustee, it's coming out, I trust you. It's making you laugh, actually.
Except when you said trustee, then it came out trustee.
Now it came out trustee. It's interesting. Okay, great. Interesting. Depends who's speaking, I guess. Okay, item number 10.4, the Award of the DSA Inspection Services Agreement for Saddleback Gateway Building and IVC Finance Building, the two new buildings. Motion is second.
So moved.
Trustee Wright made the motion.
Second.
And trustee Jay seconded it. So no comments. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Item 10.5, this is minor interior renovations for the B200 building at IVC, award of bid. So is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee Jay makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Wright seconded it. Any comments? Okay, Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
The next one is 10.6, this is approval of Orange Unified School District College and Career Access Passways called CAP with Saddleback College. And we're going to be teaching their high school students horticulture and sustainable landscaping and Rancho agreed to this. Okay, is there a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, Jim Wright seconded it. There are motions.
We need a motion.
Trustee Jay made the motion and trustee Wright seconded it. Okay, any comments? Okay, can you, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
And the next one, 10.7 is preventive maintenance service for our elevator and lift services, both at Saddleback, IVC, and ATEP. So we're working together, which is, which is good. So is there a motion and a second for this item?
So moved.
Trustee Jay makes the motion. Okay, trustee Wright seconded it. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
When you said trustee Wright, it says I trust you Wright. And when you said trustee Miltucher, it says milkshaker. Anyway, this is, 10.8 is preventive maintenance services agreement for HVAC and IVC and ATEP. So is there a motion and a second?
Second. So moved.
Trustee Jay makes a motion, trustee Wright seconded it. And is there any comment? Okay, can you please call the roll, Madam Secretary?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, 10.9 is preventive maintenance services agreements for fire protection, maintenance of Saddleback, IVC, and ATEP, which is really important. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, trustee Jay makes the motion, trustee Wright, do you want a second?
Yes.
Seconded, okay. Can I, can we, can we have a call, no call, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
I think, and then the next one is actually into the Human Services General Action Items and the Academic Employee Classified Administration Personnel. But first, I think I asked, have to ask Vice Chancellor Biscatill if there's any changes on this. So are there any, trustee Vice Chancellor Biscatill, are there any changes in item 11.?
There are no changes to this item. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Okay.
I seconded it.
Okay, trustee Wright makes the motion and trustee Jay seconded it. So can you please call the roll, Madam Secretary?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher? Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
And then classified personnel actions. Are there any changes on this one? There are changes for item 11.2?
There are no changes for 11.2. Thank you, President Miltucher.
Hey, did we?
I think we did.
Okay, I think we had a motion and a second.
So can you repeat the motion in the second, please?
Okay, the motion was made by trustee Jay and seconded by trustee Wright.
Okay.
And Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
And then the next one is 11.3, our non-bargaining unit to Vice Chancellor Biscatill. Are there any changes on this one?
No changes. Thank you.
Thank you, so.
So moved.
So trustee Jay makes the motion. Oh, we need a second.
So moved.
Okay, trustee Wright seconded it, yay. Okay, Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
And the next items are, if, there's not, nothing under technology and learning services. There's, there's our, and the next item is the information items, which is 13.1, which is staffer response. There is, there is no responses. 13.2 is retiree OPEB trust fund. 13.3 is employee plan status reports. Then there's the written reports from the administrators. And I'll ask the other administrators if they want to give a report. Chancellor Burke, you gave a written report. That was interesting. Do you want to say anything or is that?
Yes, I would like to say that the next time we see you, we will have opened the fall semester. So I just want to welcome everybody. I mean, we'll have our opening day, but I just want to welcome everybody and all of our students to the fall semester, which will be starting in a few weeks.
That's wonderful. And our next meeting will be a hybrid. We'll be, we'll be in the district offices for the first time. So that's exciting. Thank you. And then the IVC College President, John Hernandez, you gave an excellent written report also. Do you want to say something or not?
I would only just add, I want to thank you, trustee Miltucher, for promoting both colleges vaccine promotion programs for students. You mentioned the IVC Get the Vax incentive program, which started June 28th and ends August 30th. And this is a program that is intended to reach students who have not yet been vaccinated. And so in order to qualify, the student must have had the COVID vaccine the week preceding the drawing. So today we had our fifth weekly drawing. To date, we've had 78 students who have demonstrated proof of vaccination and who have entered the drawing. I realize it's a very modest number, but I think we're all doing our part in trying to incentivize and encourage our unvaccinated students to continue moving forward. That would, that would be it. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Yeah, it's so important to incentivize the students to get vaccinated. You know, as a research biologist myself, it's really important. Okay, thank you so much. And now the next person was Saddleback College President Elliot Stern.